Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Scottsburg City Council. On the June 28th, 2021, we will call our council to order. First thing we do is we have prayer. So if you all would mind, stand if you can. Let's pray with clear voices. Father, we come before you to thank you for this day of life, Father. It has been a joy, Father, to have experienced this day, to get from your hand, and we thank you for it. Many have been born today, Father, with great joy, and many have died today, Father, with great grief. So we pray you be with both, but thank you, Father, for your person, for your name, for your protection, for your keeping us unto yourself. Thank you, Father, for America, that we have the freedom, Father, to come and gather together in a independent democracy. We pray you give us wisdom and discernment in all these areas and in leading the city. We love you, we praise you, Jesus, now we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with the roll call by our court treasurer, Jan Hardy.
Mayor Amick.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hoffman.
Here.
Rick Manns.
Here.
Christian Adams.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
We're all here, save one, the one who's doing my right. My right is not here. That is our legal counsel, and his mother is ill, and he's at her bedside this evening. So I said, if we need you, we will call you. And so we have an empty chair here tonight. The first thing we do in beginning our council is have a public comment. So the Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or like officials. Sir, is there anyone here, perchance, that might like to come forward and speak tonight? Please, come forward, sir. State your name and address city council.
My name is Carmen Rapp.
Come forward here. Hey, Carmen, what?
Eight thirty-nine Lyman Street. And what I'm here for is petition to the city council about a business moving into Seven-Eleven West Street. This business has to do with...
White?
White Street. Excuse me, White Street. This business has to do with, well, housing, putting in of the boarding house for drug addiction and drunkenness. This is a halfway house. This company, Oxford Company, that is doing it, is a national company. They're stationed in Maryland, and they have somewhere in the neighborhood...
Sure, please do.
They have something in the neighborhood of sixty-five homes in the state of Indiana. They have a total of twenty-three hundred homes across the country.
Wow.
Twenty-three hundred homes. And knowing the way the market is, I'd say if you just basically say these homes are worth evenly about two-hundred thousand, maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars, twenty-three, just multiply that by twenty-three hundred. This is how big this company is. They're skirting their law for, say, well, they've taken away our rights in this town to control the growth of the town, the way the town wants to go. They say, you can't do this to us because... Well, they're bringing these prisoners in, and they're charging them, I've heard estimates a hundred dollars apiece to three-hundred dollars apiece to live there. This is where they get their income. They get the money to buy these houses from our taxes, the federal government, and they're taking it and just using it any way they want. They have a CEO, they have board of directors. I'd like to know how much they're making off of this. To me, to this, to me, this is nothing but a scam. This is, as I put in my petition, you know, an old cliche, a wolf and sheep's clothing. That's exactly what they are. They're coming, they're saying they're doing this great thing, and we don't know the results. We don't know what their liabilities are when they're in the community. If one of their inmates go out and commit a crime, hurt their next-door neighbor, or do something, what's the repercussions? Will they just take him, put him in jail? How about what repercussion, what can the offended person do? Can they sue them? Just like if there was a, oh, if this was a trucking company, and the truck driver smacked into your car, he isn't the one that pays for it, it's the company that pays for it. Do they have any liability? Now, I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming the council for anything. This was dumped on us. They were deceitful, they had a realtor from another city come sell the house, they did not inform the seller who bought it, they didn't inform the real estate agent in sale who, what this was all about, and they come in and they said, okay, it's your problem, you can't do a damn thing about it. To me, this is un-American, actually. What is this, United States of America, or the United States of China, where the leader says, you will do it, period, or you die? That's exactly how I feel about it. This is the petitioners, and like I said, I'd like to have someone, if anybody does know more about this, to explain it to us, but I'd also like to ask, as this goes on, because it isn't going to end tonight, I'd like to use references from the city council when I contact my senators and congressmen to see what they're doing about this, because it isn't just here. Like I said, it's across, it's across the United States. Canada, there's like almost thirty states that are involved. So, and to me, this is like, wow, this is like the mafia said, they go and do what they please, and you can't, you can't, nobody here, the law can't do about it. Your word means nothing, your abilities mean nothing to them. They just come over and take it over. That's not American. The same thing is, they didn't inform, they didn't inform the community to come in. Thieves do that. They come into our town and come tell us the truth in town. That's what thieves guys are.
Your five minutes are up right now, Carmen, and I want to thank you so very much. And I want you to know, first off, we have never been informed of mayor's office prior to any of this, you saw it as well. Jess, do you know of anything, any other calls we've received from them at all, or anything?
We've received nothing from them. We actually found out about this on Facebook when everybody else did. We've not had any contact with them whatsoever.
Well, this morning, I had a go-out, and there was an SUV parked in the driveway. There's going to be six people there, we're going to put six cars in the block or streets through.
The city council had questions for Mr. Carmen.
Carmen Rapp, just, it's okay, just call me Carmen, it's fine. I have nothing for that form for you. Is there anything?
I don't have any questions. We have one of those in our neighborhood, in Breeway Drive, we tried to stop it, and we told we couldn't. Also, by Supreme Court ruling, this was about...
Nineteen ninety-four.
Pardon?
Nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety-four. We have lived there for a long time, and that, there's probably five gentlemen that live there, and there's a van that takes them in and out to work.
Okay.
So, it's, I don't know if it's the same company. I learned about this through Facebook, like you all. I just want to let you know that this, there's other companies that do this, it's happened in our neighborhood. I agree with you, I like it. Didn't like it, we tried to stop it, and what's they... What's the experience been, their ear for their... They, you know, they keep to themselves. They've not bothered anybody in our neighborhood, but I'm not going to say that wouldn't happen in a different neighborhood. That, I'm just saying, in our neighborhood, they keep to themselves.
Well, now, if they did something, what...
I think you could sue, what we were told, you could sue the company.
That's what, that's like I said, a truck driver smacks into you, you sue the truck driver, you sue the company.
Yeah, that's what we were told when they built, bought this house.
See, that was one of the questions I had.
But I don't, like I said, I'm not an attorney.
I understand, it is mine. This is the first time I've ever been involved in any politics.
This was just told to us when we, you know, our whole neighborhood was up in arms about it as well, and so...
I would like, the thing that I'd ask the city council, that have assistance in contacting our congressmen and senators, and have your backing, you know, I'm not going to do anything without letting you know about it.
Sure, sure.
But I'd like to, you know, they want my vote, how I need.
And let me say this, we had before, in this northern part of Scottsburg, there were houses put in here before, for five houses, and we actually wrote an ordinance against that in 2011, that you can't put them in a residential area.
Yes.
And now we're being told by legal counsel that the Supreme Court ruled that they can't. So even though your city has already passed an ordinance, that they can't have that.
Then anybody can claim that they have a handicap, and they can have any business they want, anywhere they want it.
I think you have a valid point, and I think that this needs to be looked into further. We have two attorneys looking at it now. I say that with the city, we have two attorneys, we have one in Jeffersonville looking at this, we have our attorney looking at it as well.
And like I said, I'm going to be contacted by my senators and all that, and see just what's going on, because it's destroying the fabric of our community.
It is. And, you know, thank the Lord for America, we can do this.
Yes.
You know, absolutely. So by all means, and thank you for coming here.
We all thank everybody that signed the petition.
I have something to say.
Yes, sir.
I lived in the neighborhood, I lived in the neighborhood, didn't live, I lived there, been there twenty, twenty-three years, and it was in that north first street, between first and second street, Estle and Curtain Street. They had, we found more trash in the yards, trash in the bushes, people congregating, a lot of, a lot of noises. Scott, about how many calls did you have a month down in that region? You talking about where the halfway house was? Yeah, halfway houses were. The Honda... You know, that's made so long ago, that's been many years, you're dead for me. I don't know, I can't answer that. Well, we sat in my parking lot, just watched the activity, that's what was all else going on. And finally, they just ran out of money and moved out. But, I'm sorry, Scott, how many? I don't remember, is everyone in the jail? Was that the one, Jim Carroll, right, is that what you're speaking of? Yes. Yes, sir. I mean, it wasn't unusual to get called there. When I gave us that address, we knew where we were going. Now, I don't know if this is the same, I can sell, but I don't, but we got called there quite often. There's quite a few nights I could look out when North Wind was at the house and see police cars down there.
Well, sir, right out their backyard, there's children, I mean infants.
There's a bit of a neighborhood.
Huh?
It does not.
There's no fence around it or anything else, but there's kids playing right there. There's basically across the street, also.
I'll let all of council look at these, would you like for us to make copies of that, so council can have them to give back to you, sir?
It's all right.
Petitions?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I'd be... See, I just recently retired, so I've got something to do.
Well, thank you for coming, thank you so very much for coming.
I'd like to, you're welcome to sit down, but I'd like to just respond to some of the comments, and I don't want anyone to think that this council's indifferent to the issue of what it not. But we also have to be careful, because, you know, some of the things that we say, the action we take, could actually end up in litigation. I mean, that's part of how the whole process started, with this thing going through the court system. And I asked to see the Supreme Court ruling, and, you know, I reviewed that, and it is, you know, it's very plain with this ruling, but...
Is it the state Supreme Court?
No, it's the, it's the United States Supreme Court, and as I understand it, the issue is their interpretation of what a family is, okay? You know, this is, this is a residential area for families, so their interpretation of a family is that these individuals form a family. And, and, don't, don't, I'm, don't, don't make it up like I'm a lawyer. I, I, I understand, I'm just saying that that's how, that's how their story is, okay? And I don't, I don't know what we can do, but the mayor, he said that, you know, we're having two attorneys review that, and, you know, if there are actions we can take, I think this council would be, would be glad to do that, okay? But it's important to me for everybody here to understand that, you know, we take it seriously, it's not that we don't care, sometimes, sometimes our hands are tied, just like your hands are tied, but it's not, it's not something that is...
I think, I'm in management, I know.
It's frustrating a lot of times to sit here and want to be able to do something, and to be told, well, the Supreme Court says that you can't, okay? So I identify with your frustration, okay?
Thank you all for your time.
It's, it's important. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. And may I ask, John, a legal question, can I say we would back him, because I haven't vetted that through the legal counsel yet? So I, you know, I do not in any way want to have Scottsburg litigated.
And that's where I think we need to kind of follow, if we say something out of bounds tonight, if it...
Not have researched that myself. I would say you don't want to go over the line. Like taking a vote, maybe not be any rightful, but you might be able to voice a personal opinion for each of you, and, you know, say, if this was going to be a vote, we might, but I think taking an official position at this point might be too early.
Yes, I agree.
I don't want in any way to discuss any type of litigation, and, you know, especially something that we might not be able to win.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm okay with litigation, long as we're winning, and, you know, so...
But we'll continue to pursue whatever legal avenues we have.
I'll second your comments, and Shug's comments here, too, because obviously, this is something that's in my district, and something that I found out as well on Facebook, the night that it all went viral, if you will. The Supreme Court ruling that we're referring to, Greg Pfeifer is our attorney on the planning commission, typically what would happen in these single-family residences, these are zone R1, right, this is where White Street is located, if someone were to come in in a tenant situation to sign a lease, that would need a variance to change from single-family to multifamily, right? That would be the thought process typically. There's two things here, just from our attorney, and Jessica, you might be able to kind of help with the email, I just tried to pull the email as well. So, basically, there's a municipality in Washington State, I believe Edmonds, it'd be better to read there.
It's the exact email.
Yep. Basically, it states that, let's back it up further, the Americans with Disabilities Act, which I'm sure pretty much everyone's aware of, in the act itself, labels substance abuse users or drug addicts, if you will, under disabled, okay? So we cannot legally discriminate against someone who is labeled as disabled in that, in that frame of mind. So, basically states here, I'll just kind of read this verbatim, "Across the U.S. Supreme Court ruling in Edmonds versus Oxford House is that the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing against the disabled or handicapped unrelated tenants." So it doesn't matter if they're related, unrelated, either way. "The court held that the municipality cannot limit the number of unrelated handicapped individuals occupying the residence to a greater extent than its limits the number of related family members. However, maximum occupancy may be limited across the floor on the basis of available floor space room, et cetera. So the city zoning ordinance does not contain any prohibitions of this type of number, and if they were to be adopted, they'd have to be uniformly enforced. The city might tell family of related individuals that they may have exceeded the maximum limit, which is not an easy or complicated thing to do." So basically, to summarize, under the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act, Edmonds, and there was numerous other Supreme Court cases, this is the one that made it all the way up and had a ruling, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who we're all familiar with, and she just passed away recently, she was the one who wrote the opinion with a six-to-three decision that decided that since substance abuse users were labeled as disabled or handicapped in this term, they cannot be discriminated against by any municipal zoning laws. So, like mayor said, we had something written in 2011 that said, okay, if this halfway house were to come here, there is specific zoning to where they would be located. The Supreme Court ruling says that we can't do that. We can't determine where those are located. So, again, I, I want to second, I think everybody up here is having frustration with this, and to find out that when, you know, nine o'clock at night on Facebook, this is the first we're hearing about it, and then the next morning, we wake up at 5:00 a.m., and I start making phone calls, which we all have, just to find out, no, you kind of just kind of sit down and shut up, because there's only so much you can do, right? We want to help everyone here, that's our goal. We want to, we want to be able to be your voice as these things happen, but to this point, I think we have to be careful about how far we go, because this company has been known to countersue, and in some cases, receive funds from litigation. So, I think there's a boundary, we want to voice our complaints and frustrations, but there is a super, I mean, the number one precedent that you can have at your back is the U.S. Supreme Court, so when they slap that down, it carries a little weight. So, I just want to inform, we've been working on it night and day, there, like the mayor said, there's two attorneys currently on that. I know Jessica has listed some ordinances, too, but I know she might have something to say, but...
Oh, the only thing that I was going to add is, they actually have one of these that they put in Clark County last year, that Clark County did try to fight as well, and are currently helping the same reason. But my understanding is, and I don't, don't quote me on this, but my understanding is, Clarksville did start monitoring the area to see if there was any increase in police activity, and said that they've only had one or two instances in the last year.
Now, I think that's going to be my point, Jessica, that rest of council, although our hands are tied from a legal standpoint on this, you know, there's still local ordinances, there's still laws that are in effect, and there's still residents, there's still citizens of this community, and they're going to need to abide by those, and if they're anywhere outside of that, this council will look a law enforcement, that's what I find, so. There's that, that we have to fall back on, be good stewards of the community, I'm sure everyone's going to be keeping an eye out, and, you know, police presence is going to be increased, so, you know, as much as we say that, you know, there's only so much we can do, there's still a lot more we can do as citizens and residents and, you know, people in the community to kind of make sure that things are going as we hope they would go, so.
May I ask a question?
Would you like to come up?
Well, I can do it from here, I have a very big mouth, but I guess my question is, this halfway house, will this be for the recovering addicts of Scott County, or will they be coming from Chicago and Indianapolis and other areas? Since you've been doing some research on it.
I can only speak for the ones on the established street from us, I don't know any of those people.
That's what I figured. They won't be from here, they'll be coming from out of state.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know any of those people. As a lifelong resident of Scottsburg, I don't know any of those people.
I don't really know either, other than I know that when the other halfway houses came in, it seemed like there was an influx of out-of-state people and addicts, and the addiction and the drug problem increased significantly, so I was just wondering if it was for residents, I didn't know if you knew or not. Thank you.
Have you seen problems over by where you're at, you say?
No, we, like I said, they kept to themselves, you know, like I said, you know, but we obviously were against it, and we were, I think we filled up the zoning, you know, and we went all up, and it, and it just, we were unable, you know, and this, I can't, I can't speak to the council, I'm just speaking for myself. I understand your frustration.
Yeah, real quick, to that question as well, just due to my research with the company, the process is they find these houses, purchase these houses, and then begin an application process. So those applications, I don't know the scope of, were those residents, I guess you want to call them, where they're located or not, but it is an application process they go through, and it could take months, even a year, I'm not really sure, but hopefully I can answer a little bit more.
And one more question, did you say it was just for men?
Correct.
It's just for men?
Correct.
With no supervision?
Steve, Dave, please, and let's hear from you.
Steve, he got one. Seven-nineteen White Street, right next door. One question is, I guess, have y'all looked at their website, Oxford House, has anyone? You have? You have? Okay, I mean, there's a lot of information there, you know, it tells about, you know, they won't be local people. It tells right there on the website, so. And I visited a girl by one up in Columbus, I was given the address, well, I looked at that, it's on their website, so I just drove by to see what it looked like, and it was not very well kept, the grass was growing up, the, the land staking was bad, there was junk cars, I mean, it was a mess, you know, garage doors open, there's a mess in there.
You taking pictures?
I did not take, I could do that, though.
We have code enforcement here, so I want you to know, we wrote three-hundred-sixty-seven citations last year, so we'll be on top of that, too.
I'll stay on top of it.
If they come here.
And, like, is that what, I do have a dog, she'll, she'll take care of our, our problems. Well, thank you for listening, sir.
Thanks very much.
I have a question.
Please come on up and state your name and address, please.
I'm Irene Royce, I can speak fluent, I can, I'll have my mouth. I'm Irene Royce, seven-tenth to Lucas Street, and my question is, you said it's men, do they have a house parent, or are they just on their own, easy come, easy go?
This is not the same company, so at the company that, the one down the street, there's somebody there watching them, and they, they take them, but it's not the same company, so I, I don't know that...
Yeah, we have a lot of residents in our neighborhood, people, me included, and I think we have reason to be concerned.
Sure, absolutely, I agree.
I mean, I have dogs, I have ADP, but I still care for my life.
I mean, we were, like I said, we were very concerned when this moved into our neighborhood. My grandchildren live just down the road from it. I mean, you know, and they live in the same neighborhood that I do, and my parents live there, and, you know, I just wanted to know, I feel a frustration, it's not, you know, I mean, we, if somebody would buy that house, I shouldn't probably say this, but we'd all be happy in our neighborhood.
Yes, and we have spices.
But we were told we couldn't do anything, so I'm not surprised when Josh England came back and said, we can't do anything, so.
That's sad.
It is, it was very frustrating for, especially myself and my, my parents were really upset about it.
Yeah, there's handicapped, and then there's handicapped, and I feel, I had an accident at work, I have a legitimate handicap, but popping pill, to me, is not a handicap.
We also like to speak this evening. I would, please go forward, I'll talk right here.
Robert Lads, I live at Seven-Eleven Slater, just, just a little bit, it's probably. Can you speak up just a little bit? I've got hearing aids. Speak up, if you like, I certainly can. I don't think this is a good idea for our community, on this end of the town, for simple reason is, have you had any, is your property value went down since then?
In Breeway, you talking about where in our neighborhood? No?
No? Well, if they don't keep the property up over there, I'm a new owner, I've only lived in this, at Seven-Eleven, three years now, and I bought it because of location, I'm retired, my wife is retired, and we bought this little house, and we made it our own. We have stuck some money in this little house, decided what we purchased it for. Now, if this place turns out to be a dump over there, and I decide to sell, I can't get the money out of my place. If this, people go say, well, if that's next door, I'm not going to put my children over next door, there's children right behind this place. There's children right behind this place too. Now, if that defaces the value of my property, are you here on council going to drop my taxes? Or am I still going to pay the same taxes I paid? Because my property value dropped. No answer?
I can assure you that if it's out of code of Scottsburg, they'll be tagged and then we will, we will take action on that.
Why not, see, why not put a fence up? Why not have them put a fence up around their place? Instead of everybody else having to put up a fence?
Now, why would we?
Why wouldn't we have to be charged the price for that? Why not make this company put up a fence? So little kids can play in their backyard and not be seen from this company, from these boys, this company here? Why not, kid, the city not say, well, if it's going to be like that, well, there's a place out here on three. I don't know what you call it now, but it's a col, it's, it's a colony. They got a privacy fence all the way around. And they, they was told we could put one up. Why can't they put one up there? If that's the way that's going to be?
I, I don't know that we can force them to put a privacy fence up anymore than we can force any family to put up a fence. That, that's what I'm saying, you know, it, it's frustrating, but our hands are tied and-
If I wanted to put up a fence-
What's that?
Between, if I wanted to put up a fence between my place and them, would they at least pay part of it? I mean, would they be required to?
I would, I would, I would be required to, Steve. Yeah, you know, I think they, they might do that, but, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think city council had-
It's not required.
Yeah, I, I don't think so anymore than, you know, any other make.
I mean, I've always heard that, you know, the guy could have a fence-
And I don't know the legality of that. I mean, I guess if they, they agreed with that, it is, it is frustrating. It's frustrating for everyone.
And I have another question. Being these gentlemen are not going to be monitored. Are they going to have regular protests?
No, I don't think so.
They're not?
I don't think that's what's-
I mean, how do you know they're not monitored?
It's set right on their-
Self government.
Yeah. It's set right on their website.
No more than they are-
Sick people.
Tell people really look at the website. Well, I think, a couple of things. So I, I live on Thomas Court, right across the lake. So I walk, or actually my dog walks me around the lake most of the time. So I'm, I'm familiar and obviously that's, I don't want my wife and, and dog walking around there too, if that is a threat as well. Um, personally, I'm going to depend, you know, on Scott, Scottsburg PD to make sure that whether these people are moving in here or the people that we have existing. I know there's, there's areas in our, uh, our neighborhood, in that district right now, that have people living six, seven, uh, in, or past inmates or drug users right now. Uh, it's an unfortunate deal, trust me. I, I've searched and searched and searched, I've been on their website. It comes up and every time I Google search, it's the first thing that pops up and tells me that's suggested because I've been on there so much. I think our, our frustration right now is the fact that there is a Supreme Court precedent that literally states all the way from what we're talking about with the fence, all the way from en, enacting our own zoning laws that prohibits a big, you know, auto collision center coming right next to your neighborhood. That's what we're supposed to do as local government. But it's hard when the federal government, and even further than that, the Supreme Court comes down and says, we literally cannot do much of anything. So I, I, I want to second your frustration, believe me. I mean, we, we're, we're pretty much neighbors in that sense. You're a little bit obviously closer to, than I am. Um, but the lake is somewhere I call home and I like to be a lot. And I don't want that to go in a different direction. But I do think Scottsburg PD and as the mayor, I know councilmen, officers have stated before, we've got a vote tonight on a noise ordinance that's going to hopefully crack down on that a little bit and prohibit some of that. We have code enforcement that's going to crack down and prohibit some of that. I know White Street's a very proud neighborhood. You know, I enjoy walking down that street and seeing the pride that you guys have in your homeownership. And I hate to see that detract. Uh, all we can do at this point, from a legality standpoint, is, is base ourselves based on what we have existing on the books, code enforcement, and hopefully that there is some, come to the table, we can, we can bring this company in, maybe talk to them, let them know our concerns. From a legality standpoint, I don't know how much, you know, charade stick we can go with it, but at least tell them like, look, here is what our people who we represent have concerns, here's our art concerns, and maybe we can meet somewhere in the middle. But I, I, trust me, I, I think the frustration shares, especially.
Well, you know, even around the lake, we still have drug activity.
Absolutely.
And the police are very, they're, they're around it all the time.
Absolutely.
And they have made arrests in the past year. And just this past year, they've made several arrests. And they've even just shooting at one place. We, and seem to be like you're just bringing the foxes closer to the hens. You know?
Well, I can tell you this, anytime we have a home that has been vacated and we've seen activity going on there, silly was going back to the bank, we've been contacting the banks and said, we want to help you, we want change the locks, we'll give you a key, but we want to be able to post a no trespassing sign on your, on your home. No trespassing by order of the mayor. So if somebody's in there, we can arrest them for illegally coming on that property.
Yeah.
And as a result, we've had, we've had nine hundred arrests for that. We've had, you know, we've had three of these houses closed down like this. So I mean, it's, it's been very positive. So our position is, part of cleaning up Scottsburg is cleaning up selling of drugs. So we got to go street, go street half, go half block, and block, we'll do it. So we're, we're very active in that, with things you can see and things you can't see. That's the one more. So I want you to know that we, you know, we're very active in doing that, trying, trying to get everything cleaned back up.
Well, I know, like I said, the police are down there constantly. Day and night, I've seen. I even found needles in New York. And actually, I called the police once and they kind of picked one up. But, uh, like I say, uh, I'm just, like I said, if I had decided to go sell my home, I couldn't sell it now for what I paid for with this company here. So I lost money. That's not my intention, I don't want it, because this was going to be my forever home. And I feel for all the children around there with these addicts around. You don't know, and is, is that all that's coming? We're not looking at pedophilers, are we? You don't think any pedophilers is coming, do you?
Well, it's a handicap, they can come.
Thank you. You're most welcome, Bob, thank you, sir. Who would like to be next to speak? Please come up.
Dave Kenny. I'm similar on the one White Street, I'm on those sides, Steve.
I didn't hear your name, sir.
Dave Kenny.
Dave Kenny, okay.
Uh, I would just, want a little information. It sounds like this is kind of cut and dried, you know, some of that, that whole, all the about. Uh, what did we obtain, the Terminator Council in Jeffersonville? What, what are we looking at? Can you tell us what we're looking at?
As, as Christian Evans said, we have, uh, Greg Feifer, he's kind of a real estate attorney. And he represented Clarksville down there, and he, the same country. And he said, we lost the case because of this, because, uh, Clarksville absorbed the legal expense, we lost the case. He said, that's the bad news, but he says, uh, because of this Supreme Court ruling, but he did say that the good news is they've not had any trouble. And that's been there over a year now. So, and I don't think anybody knew this was coming in. If we had, I think people would probably want the house.
Well, there's, there's two in Clarksville.
Okay.
Okay. My son-in-law is in the police, uh, Clarksville. And they're going to be called once a week.
Once a week?
Yes. So.
To answer your, your question, Dave, I think Greg, when, when he was posted, so Greg's our planning commission attorney. Simply put, kind of make it a little easier, when we came across this, right when I stated before, single family, right, White Street is zoned, single family, anytime that a user come in to have a different tenant agreement or a leasing agreement with six different families, quote unquote, that would be for a variance that would come before the planning commission to be approved or denied. Greg, simply put, defines what those zoning requirements are and that that can come forth. This kind of cuts through that, states that since they are disabled, according to the ADA and the FHA, that they cannot be subject to our local zoning. So that attorney, when, when you asked specifically kind of what is he looking for, he is looking to determine, okay, what legal standing do we have as a city or municipality to enact our own zoning laws? And by default, with them being disabled, we cannot even enact our own zoning law requirement.
So if there was a daycare right there across the street, the next building, still open up?
It would depend on the situation, I'd have to defer to Greg on that one as well. Um, but really, I mean, the, kind of from what I think, like you said, two in Clarksville, I think they have eleven maybe in New Albany, and then I think they have nine or ten in Jeff as well.
I was just talking about the same company that's-
Yes, I think it's the same, I actually do think it's the same company. They have multiple in Southern Indiana. But basically, they come in, and again, I don't want to speak for them, I'm speaking out of bounds here. But they come in with a Supreme Court precedent, kind of put it on the table and say, you know, there's not much we can do, uh, accordingly.
To your point, I don't show, I don't think they can. I, I have to see, what do you think, John?
About what, if, if there was a daycare, they have, there's so many feet up there. My first reaction is if it was allowed as a daycare, you probably already rezoned a house to be a, turn daycare. So you may no longer have 100% formal zoning. So you may have, very, cut some of your argument right there.
Right there.
I, I would think that you, you couldn't prevent them from being next door to a daycare anymore than you could any other family.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole issue right here. That, that's, that's the frustrating part. It's like, you know, they say that this is a legal family, including the, the legal definition of a family. So, and if you can't treat that family any differently than you can treat my family, that's, so, I, I don't, it, it's, it's going to make you shake your head. I'm right there with you.
Two Christians point on their website right now. They have four in Clarksville, one that just opened up last month. They have two in Columbus. They have, I'm scrolling through, because I've got a bunch up north as well. Um, they've got Greenwood and Nitty, uh-
It's a whole lot of west.
Yeah, they've got one, two, three, they've got four in Jeffersonville. Um, they've got one, two, three, they've got three in New Albany.
I counted, I counted this morning, sixty-five in South.
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, there's six gentlemen that's allowed in the crib. That's what it said. Well, I hope they all do, but I guarantee all six won't. And if one does-
And it'll be constantly revolving.
That's the thing, that'll also-
Yeah.
You got to walk around and see all the guards.
That's one thing I would say, I mean, we don't teach any of that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak this evening? Or what questions would you like to ask your city council? Council, other statements you would like to make?
I'd just say that, I mean, trust me when I say we understand the frustration and we share the frustration. Uh, like I said before, being a neighbor in that community, when I first saw it, I, I immediately, you know, like I said, started researching and asking concerns. We're going to do everything within our power, every single thing within our power, and I can promise you guys that. I can't promise you to know the results. Uh, obviously, this is a Supreme Court precedent, this is federal government, there's a lot of sticky substances here in the way. Uh, but we're going to do everything that we can. We're going to try our best to, to make sure that your voices are heard and, and that, that same sentiment is reiterated, so.
Thank you, Christian. Anything else?
Can you keep us informed on, basically, somehow? I don't-
I don't know what that would look like, maybe.
Do we just need to come here every minute?
You're welcome.
It'd be great to have the house full. We love it, thank you.
I don't know, and Steve, I, I don't know, do we get in hot water or we, if we put it in the city webpage or Facebook page? You know, I, I often, I say, you know, that's not a problem. I, I'm afraid, but I'm, I'm, I'm aware.
You guys have got legal counsel.
I, I mean- And I think a lot of, a lot of what we're talking about with Josh is present, he'll be able to kind of draw those lines and make it a little bit more black and white and what can, can be said. I know we're trying to tread water here.
Maybe when we come next month, people will hear.
And I would appreciate it, that question before is called the mayor's office, because they're, they're in-
And it said that I called the mayor's office.
Twice, two times.
Yeah, I've never done that.
Is that the new, is that the new line number? Is you were out to lunch and I left the message. But I, twice, and I've never gotten it.
Because I have your letter and I know I can-
Yeah, you got my letter.
Right.
I just, I just wanted somebody to tell me, hey, we're working on it.
Right.
I, I, I would appreciate a response.
Sure, sure. My number is eight one two seven two two, five oh three nine, and it's on twenty-four seven three sixty-five.
Okay.
That's my-
Is that on your city cellphone number? Okay, it's on your webpage?
Oh, it's on the webpage, because we're redoing the webpage. We're redoing, we're redoing the webpage, so it's, I'm bringing it up.
Okay, because that's kind of frustrating, I couldn't find it.
That's, that's, and that's, that's being done right now. And, uh, so, so again, I'm happy to call you, so you have my number.
Yeah, we, we, Steve, anybody else? My extension is two two two, at City Hall, the four three four three, two two two.
This is on Facebook Live?
It is, it's not Facebook, it's actually, it's actually being recorded here, but it's, it's actually on YouTube, isn't it, yes?
Yes.
Or YouTube, yeah.
YouTube.
But feel free to call and, you know, if I, you know, leave me a message too, because the mayor's office is there a lot of meetings, but someone will just get back with him.
And I, I have a friend, it's a Jewish attorney in Washington DC. Tried reaching him, but I haven't been reaching so far. But he's been before the shoot, three and four, a half dozen times or more, just one every time. So I, I am reaching out to him as well to see what advice he can give us on this. So, but I'll be holding.
I think we should favor his prayer, Peter, as well.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So I want to thank you for coming out this evening and exercising your American rights to come before you. So this is great to see everybody. Any other questions before we go on with our agenda for this evening? Yes, sir?
Yes, I, I live right across the street from this place.
Yes, you do.
And I went up the other day when I heard about it and I talked to your mother.
Yes.
And she said, there's no hole. I'm sorry.
I told her, said, Bob Buck, that's my son, who's mayor of Scottsburg, right? Does she give you anything to eat?
No, she, she was having a yard sale that day. I didn't buy anything either.
Well, I want you to know that your city council and your mayor has every bit of concern as you do. as you do. We want nothing but your safety and your protection here, both physically and financially. And so we all have a concern about this. And I can't stress that enough. Every councilman up here feels this way, as does your mayor and clerk attorney. So we have concerns and, uh, we, I want to tell you something, too. We are looking to put a mental health facility in the Old McCall Center. And again, that's going to be kind of for folks who have issues like this to be able to be treated. And so we are looking this way as well, uh, to re-purpos that facility in the upstairs. So, again, I want to thank you so very much. Does anybody before I leave, does anybody else have anything else you want to say in public comment? Okay, very number, we'll, we'll forward. Next thing we have is the approval of minutes from June the fourteenth. Hold on, we're having a back sensor. Thank you, Chris Edwards, makes a motion to approve this. And John Rose makes a second person, can I just say aye?
Aye.
I, I'm, I'm going to stay, because I was not in president that day. Uh, we were all in education. So, just, I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote on those.
We have. Councilman man, first thing we have is the first reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash sixteen, and the ordinance vacated a portion in the alleyway between Oak Drive and Park. I'm jumping ahead. I apologize. We're having a public hearing petition to vacate the alleyway of Oak Drive. So we're going to open our public hearing to vacate, petition to vacate the alleyway of Oak Drive. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. If you're here to please.
Yeah, my name is Levanna Cornet, and I live at seventy-seven Oak Drive.
Levanna Cornet?
Yes.
Okay.
She's the petition. We are here on behalf of that petition.
You're here on behalf of the petition. I got you. Okay, so basically, uh, what would you like to say about this?
Well, the alley was never used and it's just, you know, it's not attended. They don't take care of it. It's just nothing but mud and stuff. And we have put gravel in there. We want to be able to, to get the alley so we can park our cars and we've asked the neighbors and stuff, too, and we've had them to sign that the thing is that's okay. So, but it's never used and nobody takes care of it. And we have people at night that come through there, the four-wheelers and, you know, when you get older and stuff, you just don't need that at twelve o'clock at night and drug heads and stuff comes up and down the alleys and, and big trucks and stuff. It's just not, not healthy.
You have very much traffic going down, down your alley?
Not that I would go.
No.
I know.
We've kind of put some gravel, new gravel and stuff there so they think and we parked the van kind of in the middle.
Kind of stops it, doesn't it?
All right, maybe, maybe expand on that a little just so the council know. This is a, this is the one remaining, um, alleyway between Oak and Park that's left of what was an extended alley. Everything else has been vacated, most put east and west. I think if you see the pictures, I don't know if you've got a copy of the petition, the pictures, there's an aerial that I took off of Google, which shows that one remaining, uh, alley for that one block, I guess you'd call it. And, uh, all of the parties that live, I think there were four, Ms. Cornet being one, then there were three others that we've gone by and asked, and they signed consents, which were attached to the petition. So basically, I think she's just asking, requesting the county to vacate that so that it would, they can actually then stop the people from going through, uh, and converting it more to private property use. And it's like standing and talking about, and you've said this before, that the city has not maintained it for decades. They, they maintained it themselves.
I think one of the things that I would have to ask is our, our utilities, do we have, because you, you know, many times utilities are used for the alley. That's one of the reasons we have that.
That would be my question.
So, I mean, that's, do the utility companies go up and down, do anything?
Not very seldom. Now, we did have one that did come by today to let do some pre-trimming around a couple of holes. That's always going to be there. I mean, the way it's going to be open, it's going to be a full road, so it'll be open to there. There will be no stopping them going down through there. It's still going to be open.
And if we vac, if we vacate it, you get half of that, your neighbor gets half of that. So it no longer gives us an easement through there. Right now, an alley gives us an easement and a right to, because that's what I'm saying, there's a lot, many times that's where we put our utilities. And we have to maintain that simply because should there be a sewer break, or should we have to do a wire? That's how we, that's how we access that. So I think, I think we really need to find out, uh.
I guess my question would be how, how was that handled with all the rest of the alley extending?
In the, in the ordinance, if you look at the first page on number five there, it's the vacation of the alleyway by the city of Scottsburg, so to the reservation by the city, up easements for utility purposes in the vacated portion of the alleyway. I think that would cover exactly what you're referring to.
Correct.
So we would still be able to, even if this property is vacated, this alley is vacated, we would still have the.
Easement.
Yes, correct, for utilities, for utility purposes. Is that kind of what you're doing on there?
Yeah, but I did read the ordinances that were done for the other vacating area, the other alley, but there's probably similar language in there or something that would allow continued access for any, any utility.
Correct.
And it also allows us to locate future utility law.
Yes, that last sentence, yes.
So, I mean, it's, we still have use of the alley for utility purposes, even if we vacate it.
And broadly, too, Stacy, right? That would be something we can, and that's coming in, you know, pretty soon, so.
The intent isn't to stop anything like that, which I'm sure was the same on the extended alley that's already been vacated. Mainly, it's just to allow them more control over the use and keeping people from going up and down it and four-wheelers and, and that sort of thing.
All we're asking, we're just, see, we want to be able to pave that, because we want to put a two-car garage back there. And with the access, you guys are still going to have access to that. There's not going to be a problem with that. There's still going to be a road, except it's going to be paved. That's all we're going to do, and then put a two-car garage down our house.
Yeah, even at that point, too, when you put that two-car garage, you don't have to come to the planning commission, so then that.
Right, I understand.
It'll be dedicated, so we'll have access.
Right, and you'll still be able to get through there.
I think that's mayor, is that kind of what your concern?
My, my concern is that, let's say, for example, the city has a, a sewer line that is.
Well, you're gonna have to dig it up, and we understand that.
So you're okay to dig up?
Oh, yeah, there's no problem with that. I mean, there's no problem. We're, we're there just to make improvements on our house, because the way it is, we can make it go from a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house to a two-hundred and forty thousand dollar house with just a few changes.
Right, right.
So that's what we're after. Yeah, as far as you dig it up, we do not care. But we just want access so we can upgrade it and make it look nice.
That's, you know, that's, in my mind, that's, that's the big thing, when we vacate something, a portion here that we don't lose.
Can't you have stipulation in there?
That's what this interview allows, that is probably on your other easement.
I think, yeah, I think that gives us autonomy to, if we have further expansion, I think that, that language there on that number five, I think does that. Well, and this is an ordinance that will require a through reading, so I, I'm, I'm going to make the motion to pass.
Well, it's probably a fair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Phil.
You're not, when you build the garage, you're not intending upon building it in where the alley is?
Oh, no, it's on our property. It's all, it's all on our property. It just gives us easement. When we go down through there, we can just pull in our garage.
Okay.
And that way, the four-wheelers and all the X things that you see going down through there, hopefully it'll solve that, because that's our short, everybody's shortcut down through Oak Drive anyway. So it's just going to cut down to help everybody else, I think, along. And plus, everybody's trying to improve their home down through there, so it's just going to make everything better. So, and that's what we're trying to do, just make ours better.
But if this will give us an opportunity to see if there are any sewer lines in, if there are no, none there now, we're probably not going to add them. But we'll, we can see what other utilities.
My guess would be if the sewer line's going this direction, it probably doesn't stop with Oak and Park. They probably continue on through the already vacated parts of the alley that had been, I think, what was it? It was Troy Roth had his part vacated previously, which is on the other side of Oak, I believe, didn't it?
Right.
So, basically, this is the last part.
I, I doubt it would be any legit, but, you know, this will give us an opportunity, you know, we can win best on, or at least consider first reading and I'll make that motion.
Well, let's go ahead and close public before.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I forgot we're in public hearing.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak regarding the vacating alleyway of Oak Drive? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public meeting. Thank you very much. Now, we have the first reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash sixteen, ordinance vacating a portion of the alleyway between Oak Drive and Park Drive in Scottsburg. Do we have a motion?
I don't like that.
Chuck Rose makes the motion.
Rick, man, seconds.
Is there questions, comments, or concerns? Right now, I'll go ahead and say aye?
Aye.
Close light sign, you, theirs. Thank you very much.
Yes, you guys, that's all we need.
Do we need to be here for the second or the third readings?
Our, our attorney will probably be here if he wants to ask specific questions. I know I'm not.
I can, I can email Josh, we can go back and forth. I sent him all the stuff on it prior to meeting anyway, so.
And if she laid mail, he would, he would.
Yeah, he'd be very, he would.
You can call or whatever.
And then Terry will follow up with the street department, but.
I'll find out tomorrow. I'll find out tomorrow and let you guys, let you guys know. Thank you guys so very much. I know, thank you, Courtney.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so very much.
Oh, my God.
Counselors always enjoy the seat.
Yeah, you do.
Thank you very much. Again, the next thing we have is the first is old business, the second reading of noise ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash thirteen. Do we have a motion to approve the noise ordinance twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash thirteen?
Just a question, did you have a chance to review it? I mean, I know what news, kind of how the press last week.
Yeah, Josh had attempted, uh, and asked for any recordations or approval before he presented to you guys the first time.
Okay.
And, and I think he, uh, mentioned in the last, the last meeting that I, I read over, there's a lot of digest, but I read over, and I, what I like about it, honestly, is there's a lot of officer discretion. It's not black and white, that, uh, take action for this or take action for that. When the officer made an expression of noise. So, in saying that, I think it's, it's three times better than what we had filed before.
This is something, too, unless council has, I mean, with July four coming out in specific dates in here, referencing that, unless council has something, I think this could be approved on second, third reading tonight. It's another discussion.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make the motion, yes, to suspend the rules and pass.
Christian Evans makes a motion to pass on second, suspend the rules for second, third reading. Is there a second? I'm sorry, we'll open seconds. Now, questions, concerns?
Chris, you had, I think, a brief quick.
What the, what the fine, the, yeah. Uh, no one did.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
With this.
We had, I had to make, so I make the motion second.
This won't go into effect or publish it because of the fee you were talking about for the Fourth of July.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if I can speak, I'm sorry. If it helps ease your mind, the, I think it mirrors the safe statute. The safe statute, all the employees are followers. And our ordinance is just mirroring that for followers. So that's not your concern, let's take an action for followers.
I was just, yeah, I was reading through today. I thought it'd be something.
It'd be nice, I know, but yeah, it wasn't that fee. And I think Josh should discuss that in the last meeting that.
So is it, is it something, knowing that now, that you guys want to vet out fully? I, I'm okay with the ordinance. I think it's ready to go. Then everybody can get it.
Yeah. Are you okay with it? Okay, sounds like, what was that? Okay, well then we'll take, go ahead and take a vote. All pay or say aye?
Aye.
Close light sign? You can add this. Thank you. Passes. Next thing we have is new business, first reading establishing, uh, the city of Scottsburg Sanitary Sewer Sewage Service Area Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One Dash Fourteen, first reading only. It's our motion to pass on first reading, establishing city of Scottsburg Sanitary Sewage Service Area Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty-One Dash Fourteen.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? All pay or say aye?
Aye.
Close light sign? Yes. Thank you. Next we have is first reading of ordinance number Twenty, Twenty-One Dash Fifteen, rezoning of Beechwood Avenue, B two, to Apud. So, uh, this is first reading on rezoning of Beechwood Avenue, B two, to Apud. This is, this is, uh, questions, comments, concerns? And this is simply because some of those lots do not meet that seventy-foot, I think, requirement of width.
There's the cul-de-sac, you know?
Yeah, there's some.
I think we got it, too.
There's only a handful of lots that don't beat that. It's just in the curves and then cul-de-sacs.
Kind of hard to say.
The square footage that the city requires is, most of them's more than, it's just the roam frontage, because the cul-de-sac lots are like five-shaped.
And that's typical of most.
Every cul-de-sac's like that. That's what I would think.
We have a motion to pass ordinance twenty, twenty-one fifteen, rezoning Beechwood from B two to Apud. I'll make that motion. Christian Evans makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? You can add this. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go forward to second, third reading?
I'll make that motion. Suspend the rules.
Chris Edwards.
So you guys here?
Chris?
I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
So make the motion to suspend the rules and go forward and pass this ordinance on second and third reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Close light sign? You can add this. Thank you very much. Thank you, bud.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I have some announcements. First, council, I have some president, give that to us.
I, I do have one, uh, one issue I'd like to bring up. I, I have decided that I would like to resign from the redevelopment commission. And, uh, I'd like to do that effectively immediately so that we can have someone in place for the July meeting. So I don't know if that takes action, but, uh, I'm, uh, resigned from the redevelopment commission and I would like to, I'll make Christian Evans to, if the council's in point, take my place on that commission.
I, I'll second that nomination.
All pay or say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I guess I should have said, Christian, should I ask your comments?
We didn't want, we didn't want to give a chance.
Yeah.
They'll let us, they'll let you.
It's just, it's all.
I just, I've got one question. Now, you are resigning from what?
The redevelopment commission. Redevelopment commission.
You mean the advisory plan commission?
No, the redevelopment commission. I've been, I've been development commission for, I don't remember when I was on redevelopment commission.
Counsel has.
It's a, it's a tip board, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any else?
No, that's good. Thank you.
I'm going to look left, I'm going to look right. Anybody down this way, have anything to say? I mean, you say what's going on. We have a brownfield update. The brownfield, Chuck, has it been going on more than a year or two?
It has been going on since before I was on redevelopment.
Jessica said earlier, she thought twenty-five years. I know it's been going on for a long, a long while. There's been, there's things that have been done, and it's at a closure now. So everything's been completed. IDN has said, okay, we've had the wells closed. The report is now going to the IDN director, who in turn will give it to the governors. So will in turn send us a letter to say they will not litigate against the city of Scottsburg. And in turn, guess what? It's going to become the property of the Scottsburg Cemetery. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. And now there's a few groups we're going to go through. Voorbourn has an interest, and we've already talked to them, and they say, yes, we want to give it to them. So basically, they will sign off.
We have been, the city of Scottsburg Cemetery Board, everybody else has been trying. I've been back there since ninety-seven, and it was going on now. Um, they kept saying, no, 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 the light's right there, that light's getting better. And all of a sudden, they kicked it out about three hundred yards. And, um, or, or everything else. And, um, and they kept saying, no, no, the cemetery can't give it. It goes Voorbourn, whatever the process was, they wanted it. And then all of a sudden, we've got it.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you want to say how many acres?
I think it's two or three, but I want to ask actually, is it packed? Because they're not interested in developing further. If they would actually slice it straight across there, so you'd have even more. So that's where we're going to go next. You were near the second side of that story?
Go ahead.
Don't print this one. Aren't we off Facebook? Anyway.
It's probably on YouTube.
The city of Scottsburg, the Scottsburg City Cemetery had the opportunity to purchase over that cedar, line of cedar trees that goes east, west, across, down to Lever's Lane for thirteen thousand dollars. The, one of the officers on the cemetery board said to the owner, said, you bought that three years ago for ten thousand dollars. I'm not going to give you a three thousand dollar profit. Scottsburg Cemetery had the opportunity to own all of that for thirteen thousand dollars. And it was turned down by one of the board members.
Made a mistake there.
Pardon?
I said he made a mistake there, didn't I?
He didn't make very many mistakes. That was witness. Yes, I'd say so. I'd say so. So that's the brownfield update. Again, this is, uh, we're waiting for the report to come back, like I said. So next thing is the VCS software announcement. We, we are looking for a new software for the city of Scottsburg, a software that, that Christian, at his age, can basically go on his phone and pay his bill, can go on his phone at any time and see what kind of usage. If these are organs that. If these are workers that, oh, that toilet's still running, you can hit on that and see if it's actual time.
My wife's in the shower.
My wife's in the shower, turn it off. Turn off, uh, it is a, it is a thankful, our rental folks that basically are going to have a, they're not paying depositing, but you, you want to get a prepaid view. So you put two hundred dollars down and the software will notify you and say, hey, you're, you've got, uh, fifty dollars left in your account, and the way you're using it's going to be up in about three days. So you need to make a, see if this can get online, give them the credit card number, gives another hundred dollars. So, uh, and if it goes over that time, it automatically shuts them off, and it could turn them back on as fast as it shuts them off. So, uh, so that's the kind of software we're looking for, uh, online, uh, paying, you know, so it's very user-friendly. Uh, next thing is, we, we did get the approval by DID on the recycling center we have, on one of the, we're going to put a, uh, application in for that, and so we do have a, there's, we're going to open up our recycle center before long. Uh, there on, uh, where our transfer station is at, we also have this opportunity to put a second compact, where the old one had been contacting, uh, household construction. It's not just household bricks, it's construction material. So it's kind of, it had been broken down twice last year, we brought, this had to be approved by DID as well, but we brought an open dumpster for just construction bricks, four-by-four, six-by-sixes, blocks, bricks, that stuff shouldn't be in a compact, he's going to open container. So the open container's there and we don't want to be down, so what we're doing is, is, is possibly getting a second compact. Uh, next thing we have is, uh, reminder of the budget workshop meeting on July the ninth at twelve thirty, and Ms. Hare is providing the notice, thank you very much, Ms. Hare.
Is that the, is it the budget or is that the department, this is the department?
It's, yeah, it's the department, I mean.
And is it budget, the?
The workshops on the thirteenth also, this is a preliminary, but it would be.
Gotcha.
Their, their concerns and requests for budget.
Gotcha.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, no, I just want to make sure they're reviewable.
Everybody's left, but I want to tell everyone that on, I'm going to bring the camera this one, that on, on July the tenth, July the tenth, because this is for everybody TV land, uh, and we're not going to have another council meeting before this time. July the tenth is going to be the pour, so if you want to go out and see forty concrete trucks, using from three different plants, pouring concrete at our wastewater treatment plant. It's going to begin at one AM, I want you to hear that, one AM, because you may get calls, we're going to literally have a flyer, we're going to take to these homes down Third Street and down North Main to Montgomery. So there's not a lot of houses there, but, but the Third Street up, because they're going to be coming from Madison and from Salem, so they're going to come up Third Street, so all those folks are going to be notified. As well as folks on North Main turning then onto Montgomery, so all the folks on Montgomery, all the folks up North Main, up to Montgomery will be notified. And it shouldn't be a lot of noise, but if you think they're going to be backing up that beep, beep, beeping, you know, you're not going to hear those, those tumblers going that much, but the beep, beep, beeping, they're big, and there's going to be a lot of traffic. But it should get all that poured, they said ten, from one AM to ten, now, was that ten AM or ten PM? Jan heard PM, I heard AM, so we're not sure. So, anyway, it's going, it's going to happen, so if you want to see a lot of excitement in the Scottsburg, Indiana, that will be blocked in the morning, come on down to the wastewater field. Let's see, what else we have? Am I correct, I think that's all we have? Yeah. Anything else? Wow. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that one, yeah.
To adjourn, thank you so very much for letting me.